Please don't make service. Good evening, we're returning from our executive session. This time we're going into work session and I'd like to turn the meeting over to Mr. Holbrook.
Thank you President Sprague. Tonight we have two different presentations for the board. And the first is from our Department of Human Resources. So I am going to turn this over to our Associate Superintendent Mike Wright and Executive Director Jesse Weisbrod from Human Resources.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Holbrook. Thank you Board members for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. What I'd like to do is just kind of do a little bit of a review of really kind of the last year. Things that have occurred within our Human Resources Department. As Mr. Holbrook mentioned, one of the big things this year was obviously the addition of Jesse Weisbrod to the staff in HR. She's been a godsend honestly in a district where we have as many staff members as we do. So I do want to recognize her and thank her for kind of joining in me with this effort. She doesn't want to come up and speak tonight, but she is obviously an integral part of our team. So the first thing I'd like to do is obviously one of the biggest undertakings within the HR Department is our hiring. As you know, this last spring and summer, our hiring was fast and furious. So we hired 163 new hires between January 1st and August start date of school. We've actually hired more people since then, but we did hire 163 new hires during that timeframe. Of those new hires, 84 of those new hires were part of our co-teaching plan that Ms. Blevins has spoken to you about previously during her presentations. Of those 163 new hires, nine were intervention specialists, serving our special ed population within our district. We did have eight administrative hires. Most of those were in our Assistant Principal ranks and some of our other ranks within administration. Of the people that we hired, 34 of the individuals that we hired came to us with master's degrees. And 121 had bachelor's degrees. And you'll say, what, that's, you know, there's 155 there, that doesn't match the 163. One of the other things that we do is we do a bachelor's plus 150. So the other people fall within that area there. But most of our individuals that we hire are new hires are coming with bachelor's degrees. We do hire some experienced individuals who do have master's degrees. So let's talk specifically about those elementary hires. This was where we actually did a great job and I will give kudos to our instruction department, to Rick, to Andrea, to our entire team up there. We got out early and we got out often and we really beat the doors down and got some really, really good new hires at our elementary level. We hired 20 teachers for Bridgeport Elementary. We hired 16 teachers for Brookwood Elementary. We hired 10 teachers at Crawford, 19 at Fairwood, 18 at Highland, 18 at Linden, 15 at Ridgeway and 11 at Riverview. Now, when you look at that, you say, why are there such a difference in numbers? Why was 20 at one building and 10 at another building? Well, part of this is obviously the severance package we offered last year created some additional openings at certain buildings as well as with the way that we restructured our title services. Some of those title services within those buildings were higher numbers and some were lower numbers. So as we shifted into that co-teaching model, there were more openings in certain buildings and less opening in other buildings. So you'll see that, you know, kind of on average, we hired 15, 16 teachers at each one of our elementary buildings, which makes sense because we do have 12 co-teaching sections at each one of our elementary buildings. The other hires were probably, you know, retirements, you know, people leaving the district, shifts from maybe elementary to middle school, we do have that sometimes. So that's basically a breakdown of our elementary hires. Secondary hires. We had 15 hires at Garfield. We had three at Wilson. We had two at the freshman campus and we had four at the main campus. I will tell you that in my time in this district, I don't remember another time when our freshman campus, high school and our elementary schools were that low. Now Garfield's a little bit higher. We did have a few retirees over there. We had a couple that took the severance package and we had a couple that obviously left the district. But when you look at that three, two and four, we were really, really secure and had a lot of continuous service with our, with our secondary buildings. So I think that speaks volumes to obviously the buildings as well as the satisfaction that our employees are having in those particular locations. Oh, sorry, we did have four hires at the Miami School. Sorry, I forgot to add that one. And that was basically, obviously our VLI program is under our Miami School now. So that was basically to make sure that we're staffing those VLI programs. This is one of the things that I'm most proud of. When I came into this job three years ago, one of the things that we had talked about in this district forever and ever and ever and I had heard was promoting diversity. We are partnering with all the other Butler County Schools, with Butler County Educational Service Center. We have a group called Educators United where we are linking diverse individuals up with others in the county and allowing them to work as colleagues. And I see this as being one of the things that's going to really promote this district into the future is the fact that we are promoting diversity. We were fortunate enough to hire six new African-American teachers this past spring and summer. We also hired two individuals who were Asian. One new hire was Hispanic Latino and one new hire was American Indian. And when I, when I look at these numbers, you look at, obviously we hired 163 people. You know, we're looking at 10 individuals there. You still look and say, that's kind of a low number. And I agree, that's still a low number. We're not anywhere near where we need to be. But what I can tell you is if you look back in history of what we've been able to hire in the past years and promoting diversity has been a struggle for us. It's been a struggle for us to, first of all, find candidates. It's been a struggle for us to hire candidates and it's been a struggle for us to retain candidates. That is one of our goals here at Hamilton City Schools is to make sure we are not only promoting diversity, we are hiring individuals, we're recruiting them, we're retaining them and we're setting them up for success. So that's going to continue to be one of our objectives and one of our goals within the HR Department. Let's talk a little bit about one of the things that has come up as far as, you know that the pool of substitute teachers out there is very minimal. So we were a little creative in some of the things that we've done this past year, year and a half. And one of the things I want to report to you tonight is how that has impacted our substitute pay and what we're doing with our HCTA Union and our Teachers Union. I'm going to go back a couple of years because obviously everybody knows 2019, 20, 2021 was a little different with COVID. But when we go back and we compare what we were paying in certified subs, the fiscal year 19, which is kind of the last, what's called, normal year we've had in education. During the first six weeks of that fiscal year 19, we were paid, we paid out $91,000 in substitute pay. Just to compare that year, we ended up kind of over the year. Fiscal year 19, 18, 19, 20, our substitute and modular pay for teachers and for certified subs was right around $1 million. So one of the things that we've been able to do is we've been able to be a little creative in the way that we're doing things. This past quarter, basically first six weeks of this first year of 21, 22, we incurred $30,000 in costs. So if we speculate this out and obviously Bob can, can give you all the numbers, we're estimating that this could be anywhere from, you know, a 400 to a $600,000 in savings for the district as we continue to move forward. It also does the other thing, which is it gets our teachers in front of our kids all day long instead of having substitutes in front of our kids all day long, which we know is probably a benefit to all of our students having our own hired certified teachers in front of our children. So I did just want to give you an update on that and I can update you later on. You know, as we get into obviously the mid-year range. And then once we get to the end of the year, I'll have more exact numbers as to how this has impacted our substitute teacher costs across the district. Let me talk a little bit about upcoming events. We do have four different bargaining units within the district and we're going to have four bargaining agreements that are going to be coming up in this springtime. They're going to end in, in June, June 30th, they will all go out of date. So we're going to be bargaining with all of our four different unions. So we'll have HCTA, OPEC 151, which is our Clerical Educational Assistant Union, OPEC 711, which is our Transportation Unit and ASME 468, which is our Maintenance Custodial and Food Service Contract. So we will be negotiating all these in the spring. I'm already in talks with each of these individuals, the presidents in our district and we're already establishing dates and setting dates so that we can begin these contract negotiations probably right after the start of the calendar year. So in January sometime, we'll begin these negotiations. The other thing that is new this year, kind of from an HR perspective, is there's a new teacher evaluation model where in the spring, we took all of our administrators and we spent time training each one of our administrators who are going to be evaluating teachers in this new OTES 2.0 model. So it's the Ohio Teacher Evaluation System. The new 2.0 model is a little different than what we've been doing in the past. There's a much higher focus on data analysis for the teachers, which is kind of the new piece. And it really kind of focuses on their professional growth plan, which is their plan to develop and kind of enhance them as teachers. So we've been implementing that, the beginning of this year, we started that. We're seeing a few little bumps in the road, you know, as we obviously do whenever you go into a new system. But overall, I think we've done a great job of kind of infusing this new system into the district. Teachers, I think, feel a little more comfortable that they have a little more control because they're developing their own professional growth plan. And it really is a collaborative effort between the evaluator and the evaluator. So the teacher and the administrator evaluating them, they really work a little more alongside each other through this process. Whereas the old system was more of the teacher does their thing, the administrator comes in and evaluates them, they write up a, an evaluation report, they discuss it and then they kind of move on. This one really kind of puts them in tandem, working alongside each other, developing that professional growth plan, working on the evaluation and identifying specific areas of either growth or refinement that that teacher may have and enhancing that teacher as an individual and really analyzing that data. One of the things we're going to be converting to next year is we will be converting to the OPEZ, which is the Ohio Principal Evaluation System 2.0. It'll be a new system that also goes along with what the OTES does. It'll be kind of a similar system. It'll focus the principals on those same sorts of goals and how are they doing those same things with the building as what teachers are doing with the students. The other thing is, we do have some individuals who obviously don't fall under the teacher or the principal categories. So we have a number of other evaluation systems that we use in the district. We developed an evaluation committee. One of the things that that evaluation committee is going to do is going to continue to look at our other evaluation models. For example, Danielson is the model that we use for non-teaching employees. So school psychs, nurses, individuals like that. And then we also have evaluation systems that we use for our non-teaching employees. So bus drivers, educational assistants, secretaries, custodians. So we're going to continue to be looking at those evaluation systems. And one of the things that we really want to focus on within HR is making sure that they're meaningful. We want to make sure that the evaluation system is meaningful to both the individual who's being evaluated as well as the evaluator and it's not just, let's go in and checkbox and move on. So we want to make sure that these evaluation systems are meaningful and they're really there to grow individuals to become better at their craft. So that's a 15-minute snapshot of everything that's been going on in HR. That's all, that's all we do. That's all we do. We're going to hire people and evaluate people and negotiate contracts. But obviously, those are just some of the highlights. We have a ton of, a ton of things going on within the HR Department. We're always looking at trying to make things better for our district. You know, we're in this for people and that's our job in HR. We want to make sure we're taking care of our people and that's what we continue to focus on within our, within our goals and objectives of our department. So questions?
Well, I was just going to say, I want to thank you very much on this. I know how important it is hiring the right people from the very beginning. Because if you don't, that solves a lot of problems when you're able to hire these people and such a big class of 163, is that what it was?
163.
Is incredible. And of course, the, the 80 some that we've, we're using as co-teachers. And I just want to say, I know that Mrs. Blevins, Mrs. Blevins was involved with the Local 12 report. We've gotten some good press out of that. It's in the, been in the paper. It's, it's nice to see that we're able to do these for our kids and we're hiring, getting ahead of the curve and hiring quality individuals to fill these positions. And that's what we want. We want quality. And like I said, once we, if we get quality from the very beginning, it takes care of a lot of problems as we go down the road.
Well, we know, and I think Mr. Holbrook has spoken to this previously. We know that the most important commodity we have as a school district is our teachers. I mean, they're the ones that are in the classroom every single day. They're the ones that have the greatest impact on our 10,000 students in this district. And we really take pride in our district and within the HR Department of making sure we, we go through a true vetting process. You know, we're going to, we're going to ask some questions and we're going to interview and we're going to find out. The other thing I think that some people often take for granted is it's, it's always about fit. You know, there's, there's a fit for each individual building in this district and there's a fit for this district as a whole. And we have to find the people who fit our mold and have the same goals and the same initiatives that we have as a district. And, and that is growing kids. We want to make sure that we take every kid and we grow them every single year, every single day, every single second. So we have to find people when we go out and do interviews that have that same mindset. And if we do our work upfront, as you, as you said, that saves us a lot of issues on the backend where, you know, we're having to maybe, you know, work through improvement plans and some of these other things that we have to do when, when needs aren't being met.
Well, I know with the old teacher perceaser back in the day, it was the mission mindset and having the mission that you're going to grow kids. It's, it's what you're, you have a passion for. And so I just appreciate it. And also, I want to say kudos on the diversity of, of, of new teachers you've brought on board. I know it does sound like a small number, but I've been around this district long enough to know that, that, how difficult that is to find quality individuals just to get them into our district and finding that many, it's, it may look small on the outside, but on the inside, that's a huge leap. But I can only hope that it will continue. And I forget the name of the program, is it Unity?
Educators United.
Education, that gives a, a support system for those teachers to be a part of this. So congratulations on that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I just want to also say, as, as Mr. Sprague has said, yeah. We appreciate the hard work that's being put in to everything that you do, including the hiring of the teachers, including the dealing, the deals, dealing with students that you have to deal with in the HR. There's a lot more that people don't realize what you're doing. And to have a, a low number of turnovers, it seemed like a lot because we had to hire the additional. But it seems like a lot, but that retention speaks well. And also it helps because new teachers, you know, take time to get a little acclimated. But if you're now in your third, fourth year as a teacher, you know how the system is working. You know how the system needs to work. And I think that's a big plus that, that we're at that spot.
Yeah, I remember when I first came into the district, I mean, we were hiring 140, 150 teachers a year. I'm, I'm sure Lauren, you remember. And you know, up until this year, obviously with the co-teaching model, that, that changed, that was a little bit of a game changer. But you know, the last couple of years, we've averaged between 30, 35, maybe 40 teachers that we've been hiring. And that's the number we want to continue to shoot for. I mean, you know, we want to, we want to obviously bring them here, we want to grow them, we want to continue to, to refine our, our, our craft. And I think we're on the right track with that. And I do, I do take pride, and I know a lot of other people take pride in the fact that we do see those lower turnover numbers from year to year.
So saying, want to definitely say thank you for all your hard work and all the different areas that you have to navigate through and keeping all that in nice sneak piles. Because it's a lot of, you know, it could be a lot. So, but also that diversity piece, I'm glad that there has been intentional work on that piece because that's very important to me as well as others. So I'm glad that we as a district are being intentional about that and, you know, we were gaining traction. So I definitely look forward to continual updating, you know, in hiring and in, in all those areas. I think that's, you know, really great to have that kind of diversity. You know, it, it will help even more so speak to the kids that we educate every single day, that that representation is there and they get to see people that look like them. So I know how important it was for me and my education and others. And so I know that that piece will be great. So I'm glad that other educators are coming together in Butler County. They have, you know, formed that alliance. I think that'll be great to have those conversations there and to just help piggyback and get information and ideas of how others are doing things in their district. So I appreciate that piece being addressed and being a part of the presentation.
And like I said, you know, we're, we're scratching the surface. We, we're, we're making steps.
Yes.
And we want to continue to make even larger steps in the future.
Absolutely. So I'm grateful, I'm grateful for that.
Mr. Wright, I, I don't know if you properly described the scope of work which an HR department does. When, when Mr. Wright took over that department, he was the only administrator with some clerical support. We would think that that is so understaffed if we had a building that had over 1,200 students in it. We have over 1,200 employees. You know, the teaching staff is a significant portion of that, but, but everything from bus drivers to, to food service, to educational aides, to clerical. So, so we added an additional administrator this year and we're probably still a little understaffed when you consider the scope of what that job entails. And Mike has come in and has just done a tremendous job on refocusing the emphasis on, we are a people business. And our most important commodity we have are, are, are the people that are in front of our teachers every day, that are serving them meals every day, that are driving them to school every day, that are answering our phones and, and, and talking with our parents every day. And, and so I just want to compliment yourself, Jesse, and the entire HR department because we, we have made huge leaps and strides towards the vision that I would like to see that at. And we, we are right there. We hired some quality, quality, quality individuals this year. And it's because we were aggressive. We went out, we didn't wait for them to come to us, we went to them. We visited colleges, we visited universities, we, we, we did those things and, and did them in a difficult time when COVID and restrictions were there. And so I just want to compliment the entire department on their efforts with that. And there's only great things ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Holbrook.
Thanks, Mike. And thanks, Jesse.
We realize it's tough, Ms. Weisbrod, but you can carry him.
We don't want to bear share anything.
The second update we have this evening is from our Business Operations Executive Director. He's going to talk a little bit about Bridgeport Drive and some of the things that are happening with that or didn't happen with that years ago when Bridgeport was initially built in then. And so, Mr. Kilby, I'm going to turn it over to you at this point.
All right, thank you. Good evening. So if you recall, about a month and a half ago, I spoke to the board about what was going on over at Bridgeport with the property there. We started looking into, sorry, we started looking into separating that property across Bridgeport Drive from the main Bridgeport Elementary property at the beginning of the year. It's been a long process. Through that process, we found that we had started some steps back in 2008 and then again in 2015. And for whatever reason, we never completed the process. During the last few months, we've just found out that Bridgeport Drive is actually not a dedicated city street. That it's actually an easement going through our property. So in order to complete the separation of that property, we've been advised to first dedicate that street as a city street. So we went through the paperwork, the drawlings with Bear Becker. And last week, we met with the City Planning Committee. with Bear Becker, and last week, we met with the city planning commission, and they approved to move forward with that dedication of Bridgeport Drive. So, moving forward, that goes now to the city council for voting. It'll be on three city council meetings, first as the caucus, and then there'll be a first reading on December 1st, second reading on December 8th. And I will, I'll attend both of those, just in case they have questions for us about that property. And then, once we get through that process, and that is approved, again, during this whole process, we've discovered that the detention pond behind Bridgeport Elementary is actually no longer up to date. So, once we get these plans approved, the street dedicated, then there'll be another process of going out to bid in order to get that detention pond up to, up to date. So, that's really about the jicks of the update on that, so.
The, the detention pond, that's where some of the soccer, it's a...
So, we asked that question. We were worried, because when you look on the drawings, it looks like it creeps up pretty close to the soccer field behind Bridgeport, but it does not.
Oh, okay.
So, we're feeling, we're feeling pretty comfortable that we're gonna, we're gonna not get into the soccer field over there.
Where is that located?
It is, if you go behind Bridgeport Elementary, it is south of the tennis courts. You'll see some cattails and things like that over there at one time.
Yeah.
We've, we've done a lot to clean that area up, but it's based, you know.
Okay. I thought there was runoff from the school into where the soccer field is.
There is not, no.
Okay, cool.
That's where we're at.
Is there anything that would, that you perceive that is gonna be a roadblock to...
Does not sound like it. We've definitely done our homework. I mean, we've, there were so many things on file.
I can't believe it was never dedicated.
And, and this is a, it's going to be a drawn-out process with contractors, the way they are right now. Everybody's backed up materials. We don't expect this to happen quickly. Once we go out to bid, then we will have to revisit again. This just gets the street dedicated, then we'll revisit again. Once that's done, the detention ponds completed of separating those, that property into two.
Okay, so the detention pond has to do with the street dedication?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
That's about all I got.
Thank you for figuring that out.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Mr. Sprague, that's what we have this evening.
Okay, we are going to take a short recess and start again at 6:30 for our regular scheduled meeting. Thank you.
And I'd ask that you stay on your feet before I have something else to announce. So, flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This evening, I'd like to just spend a minute. We had some bad news in our district today of a passing of a teacher, and I'd like to read a statement. Can you hear me? Before beginning this meeting, we ask that each individual take a moment of silence to recognize the untimely passing of Wilson Middle School teacher Jennifer Williams. Ms. Williams has worked in Hamilton City Schools for seven years as a science teacher at Wilson Middle School. During her career in Hamilton City Schools, Jennifer positively impacted thousands of students, and she will be sorely missed. Her love for the students she taught and the Hamilton City School District was evident daily. The Hamilton City School District and the Wilson Middle School community send our thoughts and condolences to her family. Please join me with a moment of silence. Thank you. Please be seated.
Ready? Before we get started, I don't know if there's any veterans in here, but if you are, and to all the veterans, since this is Veterans Day, I want to say thank you for your service, your dedication, and your time. I have a Facebook post I put every year. My grandparents, my father's parents, were immigrants from Sicily in World War II. She had five sons. They had five sons that served the United States Army. And they had another daughter and another son that actually worked in a war plant during World War II. So, I just want to say thank you to all the veterans, and God bless you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Board members, we have in front of us the minutes from our last meeting. I'd like to have a motion to approve those minutes.
Who made that motion to approve the minutes?
I'll second it.
Mr. Hancock?
Mr. Isgrum?
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes. I'd like to read a statement regarding COVID-19. The Hamilton City School Board of Education has always emphasized the importance of safety with students, staff, and the community. Additionally, all Board of Education members believe that parent input is a critical component of a child's education. Over the past several months, school districts and the local boards of education have been placed in positions to make many non-traditional decisions. Currently, the question of mandatory COVID-19 vaccinations has become an item of discussion and debate. Unless required by federal, state, or local authorities, the entire, not just the people sitting here, the entire Hamilton City Board of Education has no interest in mandating COVID-19 vaccination for students or staff. The decision to receive the COVID-19 vaccination is a parent, family, and/or individual decision. And the Hamilton City School District Board of Education looks forward to a safe and productive remainder of the 21-22 school year. Thank you.
At this time, we have a moment for a member of city council. Mr. Ryan?
Good evening, and good evening to all staff, parents, and guests. First of all, I just want to extend my deepest condolences and sympathies to the family of Ms. Williams and those students that she affected. If there's anything city council can do, please let us know moving forward. Secondly, I just want to thank all of you, the board and superintendent, for coming to the state of the city back in October. It was an exciting night, to say the least, very explosive, in my terms. It just shows that we've got the best people doing the best job. City councils make the right decisions that are going to move our city forward. And if there's any indication of how explosive the city is for the next couple of weeks, it's going to be very, very exciting. So hopefully by Christmas, we'll have some really cool stuff get announced.
And you mean explosive in a good way?
Yes.
Okay, just want to make sure.
Yeah. So, the only update I really have is, as most of you know, the infrastructure bill in Washington was passed late Friday night. With the infrastructure bill, Amtrak is going to be getting their federal allocation of monies to upgrade stations, build new ones, and build new lines. And as you know, city council, including myself, have been working really hard to get Amtrak to come back to town. It's something that we are passionate about when it comes to economic development initiatives and travel and tourism, especially with the NOC coming online here next spring. So, with that being said, we have dusted off our plans. We have begun discussions with Amtrak, and they are ready to proceed. So, we have a long way to go, but the biggest thing is that we are proceeding together. So, we were able to go to the next step. So, like I said, a step forward is better than no step at all.
That's true.
So, we're excited. We're going to continue to pursue that. We might be able to get both lines on the 3C, which is Cincinnati, Columbus, Cleveland, and then the Indianapolis-Chicago-Cincinnati line. So, we're going to work hard to get both lines, and stay tuned for further announcements when we hopefully get the new station location figured out. We'll let you guys know. So, other than that, happy Thanksgiving, and maybe we'll see you by Christmas.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Michael.
Thank you. That's exciting news for our city. Mr. Horbuck?
Yes, you have two items in front of you this evening, and these are both first reads to policy. The first is the adoption of some language from the resolution that we created regarding board policy and public participation with signage. That is a first read tonight. The second item that we have is the district calendars for the 22-23 and 23-24 school year. They're both first reads. They don't require any action this evening, but they will be voted on in December.
Okay. Thank you. And we don't need to take any further action right now.
No.
At this time, it's our opportunity for public participation. Just want to remind everyone of, most of you should be aware of our policy at this point, that each speaker is limited to three minutes, and the total amount allocated to this is 30 minutes. So, I will ask Mrs. Tanya Starjo to come up, and I think it's Janetta, Janetta? I'm sorry. DeWise, you're on deck. And please state your name and your address, please. Thank you. You can pull it down.
That's okay. I don't really think I need it anyway. You guys know me. I don't need the microphone. I usually prepare a speech, but I didn't really think it was necessary. I think I speak for a lot of parents right now that we do not feel heard. I personally emailed every single one of you this week. I got no email back from anyone but Mr. Sprague. No one took the time to email me back. That's happened dozens of times. I find it hard to believe that you find time to do all these other things, but you don't have five minutes to reply to an email from a parent of many students in your district. Are we that unimportant that you don't have that time to just send an email back? When is it that we're allowed to ask you questions, and you actually have to be held accountable to answer those questions? Because you're not available by phone, you're not available to come into the building and speak to you, you won't answer our emails, and we're not allowed to ask questions in here where you respond and answer us? So, when is it that we're allowed to talk to you, and you have to answer us?
I don't like responding in public, but I will say that you wrote the same email to each board member. I did respond on behalf of the board member, and you wrote me about not responding to your phone calls. I've never received a phone call from you. Our phone numbers are posted. Thank you. So, continue. I'm sorry.
Your emails are also posted, and I emailed every single one of you. And I'm pretty sure all of you can talk, so only one of you is allowed to email me back. You work for us, not the other way around.
This is DeWise. And Andrew Davidson, you're on deck.
Hi, it's Janetta DeWise. I'm 74 West Persimmon. I just want to, first of all, I want to thank the board for the statement that you just made opening up, because it is such a personal decision. God gave us our bodies, and it should be our choice what we put in them. So, I appreciate that for the teachers and the staff as well, that they can make that choice. And I want to just say thank you to all of the teachers in our district. Many teachers have reached out to me personally and just thanked us for speaking up. And I don't think they've, I think it's been a hard road throughout COVID for the teachers, but we appreciate them so much and the staff. I did want to extend my condolences to Ms. Williams' family. That's tragic. And I wanted to thank all the veterans, including my, well, my son's not a veteran, but he just graduated in the spring, Jonathan Hughes, and he's actually serving. He's at Fort Benning, and I'm so proud of him. He decided to follow in the footsteps of his grandparents and uncles and cousins and everyone else. But I do, I do want to echo what Tanya mentioned is, I know, it doesn't feel like, you know, we can come up here and talk to you every month, but there's no, we don't get any response. Like, we can't, there's no open forum, or I think it would be a good idea to have a town hall meeting, maybe, maybe once a quarter or a couple of times a year. I know some districts do that, and it does feel sometimes like we're having, we're talking to the wall. It's a one-sided conversation, and we've had questions. Many of us have raised questions during these times, but it's, I mean, they're not rhetorical questions, but it feels like, oh, okay, well, you know. So, anyway, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Andrew and Charlotte Hale, you're on deck.
Andrew Davidson, 224 South Gerson.
Andrew Davidson, 224 South Gerson Avenue. I simply want to talk about, really kind of tell a story of the week that I've had dealing with the district. On Wednesday afternoon, I went into the Fine Arts Department to fill out my paperwork to volunteer with the Hamilton Show Choirs, as I've done every year since I graduated in 2018. My paperwork wasn't even sent to this building to be approved or denied in any way. On Thursday, I received a phone call from the Fine Arts Director stating that I would not be allowed to volunteer with the district in any way at all. I asked for reasons on that, and was given none. Was told to contact other people about it. I attempted to make those emails and phone calls and did not get a response. I do want to say I have not contacted a single board member about this at all. But it's very concerning to me that my paperwork was not even filed, it wasn't put through the proper chain before I was denied, so there's not even a record of me being denied outside of what I have to say, and outside of what the choir director has to say about it. And I'm not simply just a volunteer to go there and help out with kids, you know, on the bus and watch over them. I am their drummer and band director, I've done that for many years now, I was doing that while still in high school as a student. No one had made the director aware that I would not be allowed to volunteer, so now there is a scramble to fill, you know, just to replace me on that. And we don't know what other people will be denied volunteers, so we don't know who is even going to be allowed in there. And I really just want an answer as to why, you know, as long as it's a valid reason, I, you know, I'll shut up, it won't matter. But if anything, it's the students and the staff that are being hurt by this right now. I don't get much out of doing it personally. I have to, I give up every Saturday for three months out of the year, 18-hour days, and I'm just sitting around with kids that are not my age, I'm not really having a lot of fun, but I do it because I'm there to help them. I've done a lot, I've put in more hours than I've been given credit for doing that. And I simply want a reason why, and I don't know who can give me that reason, but if someone could reach out to me, Mr. Sprague, I know you have my phone number, so you can contact me about it anytime, but thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Charlotte Hale, and Justin, Justin Theodore, you're on deck.
Good evening to all the board. I just wanted to take-
Would you just say your name?
Absolutely. My name is Charlotte Hale, and I am with the YWCA Hamilton, 244 Dayton Street, Hamilton, Ohio. And I just want to, first and foremost, one, extend the YWCA's condolences for the loss of Mrs. Williams. That is very tragic to hear, and we hope all the students and families involved receive healing and have our blessing. One, want to introduce myself on behalf of the YWCA Hamilton, my name is Charlotte Hale, I am the new Director of Racial Justice. And on behalf of the YWCA, just want to, one, share, hopefully I have permission from the board to give you my card, so that you have my contact information. I also want to extend support and appreciation for all that you do as a school board, especially on behalf of all the diverse students and parents and families in the district. And also want to say that same thing to all the parents in the room, we appreciate your consistent input into the community and how it goes, and we're really excited to partner with the district in whatever resource capacity you all need. So thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thanks.
Mr. Theodore, and then Jennifer Mason.
Just want to say real quick, it looks like we have a lot of teachers and staff in here, and if they would rather speak, I don't want to take anybody's time, I've spoken a few times, so I'm willing to go last.
Just say your name and your address.
You're fine.
All right. Justin Theodore, 1563 Northwest Washington Boulevard. I'm here to speak about the school board's resolution to the OSBA's decision to terminate its membership and affiliation with the NSBA. I appreciate that resolution, and I thank you for that. But honestly, the behavior and attitude of the school board towards the parents and community members before and after the OSBA's decision to terminate their relationship with the NSBA needs to be addressed, in my opinion. The NSBA's letter asking for federal law enforcement assistance was sent and made public on September 29th. The OSBA did not terminate their affiliation until October 25th, it's 27 days, it's a month. You know, parents were called terrorists, and for a month, school boards, school board associations think they're just waiting to see, you know, what the reaction was. Up until that time, the treatment and attitude towards parents was grotesque at best. This really became glaringly apparent by the complete 180-degree flip of the school board, what you exhibited on the October 28th, the last meeting. Honestly, all I see is reactionary behavior by this school board, you know, not the proactive behavior that I would expect someone of, you know, your position to have. You know, it seems like you're basing your decisions on larger entities, the wait-and-see attitude. I, I'm, I'm just asking that you make a solid decision based off of your experience and common sense. That'll get you 90% of the way. I've managed people for over 20 years in my line of work. Trust me, it works. But honestly, I'm sorry, I, I don't trust you anymore. I'm sure there's several other parents in here and in this district that don't, to the point where I, I've actually removed my kids from this district. You lost two students over the last month because of that, okay? The ship of trust and respect that you had, at least from me, or what little you had from anybody, in my opinion, it's gone, okay? I, I see you as politicians, you know, your decisions prove that to me, your decisions are based off of what you perceive to be the most popular idea, in my opinion. That's obviously not always right, it's not an example we set for our children, you know. I believe you kind of caught a glimpse of that by the reaction to the NSBA's letter by other school boards, school board associations. You didn't, you didn't see it until it was condemned, and honestly, I think that's the problem. You're, you're not worried about what really matters, you're worried about what people will think. Thank you.
Ms. Mason, and then Dan Acton, you're on deck.
Hi, Jennifer Mason, 1655 Stall Haber Road. I just wanted to say, I don't actually have any new complaints tonight, surprise, and I do appreciate the fact that the parents are being allowed to actually be parents and make the decision for our own children in regards to the vaccines. But I wanted to clarify really quick a few of my comments from the last meeting. I mentioned that I had never thought about the board and didn't know any of your names. It was never really a concern of mine. I, I don't know how long any of you have been on the board, I know that at least one of you has been a couple of years. I believe one of you is back after being gone for several years. But just as I didn't really know any of you guys, I started to think that you probably don't realize who I am either. So I wanted to make a few statements to maybe jog a few memories into who I am. Three years ago, Brookwood was having some major parking lot issues during the morning drop-offs. My son was almost hit about three times while getting out of the car. Nobody really seemed to care, so I continuously sent the then-principal and superintendent emails and voicemails until finally, the school got nice, new shiny signs with the rules and regulations. There was cones put out where they should have been, and the teachers were actually out there every morning, making sure that kids weren't turned into, you know, happy little pancakes. So then, that was three years ago. Two years ago, y'all may have heard about the crazy parent who called the Hamilton City Police Department to file a report and possibly press charges on a fourth grader for spitting on her son's face. Hi, that was me. So then, my history of, you know, mama crazy when it comes to protecting my kids in this district goes back a really long time. I believe it was 2007, 2008-ish, my then-eight-year-old daughter was refused a drink of water during gym class on about a 90-degree day by a very nasty gym teacher, whose name I won't mention, because she asked by saying, "Can I?" instead of "May I?" So, long story short, her superiors, the principal, and I assume the then-board members, banned that teacher from speaking to my daughter for the remainder of her time at what was Fillmore. That was approximately two years that she wasn't even allowed to speak. So the reason that I am bringing this up is just to kind of let everybody know that when it comes to protecting the health and mental well-being, I'm not going anywhere, and I just don't want you to, to think that my not caring your names is passive in any way when it comes to the health and well-being of my kids.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Acton.
Wanted to bring up a, a few things. One of them were the multiple public records requests that I've put in that have been denied. The first instance I'd like to bring to the board's attention, and it belongs in the CRT category, were the programming being taught with the Men of Honor program. My request has been in for two years now, and recently again denied the right to review that curriculum. Denying records should be a huge red flag to the board members, the administration, our community members, and certainly the media. I can't tell you how, how upset I am that a board that we help support with our tax dollars would be so arrogant as to withhold that curriculum. I've been told that, you know, recently, I spoke with a representative from the administration who told me that based on some of the concerns that I've had over the last couple of years, that they indeed would kind of formalize what components would be taught out of that curriculum. Well, that's nice, but they've had two years, over two years now, to indoctrinate those children in that programming. I just, and still, because they were going to amend and formalize the programming, I still can't see, nor any of us in this room, can we see that programming? And so we wonder where all this conversation comes from with critical race theory and all this kind of, the wokeness and all that kind of stuff. It's at your doorstep, board. It's at your boards. I didn't create this mess. I've got better things to do than to live my life on Twitter and social media and come to board. We all have better things to do than to come here repeatedly to try and get answers, and we never get them. We come up here like little parrots and, hey, you know, we have a concern about this, and concern about that, it's public comment time, and we're expecting answers, and not one less, except the one directed to Mrs. Stargell, has been answered. And that was kind of off the cuff, but still didn't answer the underlying questions about why these, why you as elected board members cannot reply to a simple email. It seems that we've gone into campaign mode again, just like the last time, where suddenly the, the deadline to file for election comes by, and then a couple of days later, shazam, we have an 8:00 AM meeting, and we can laugh, and we can turn around, look at the clock, and see how much time we have. But those are, those are suspicions that I didn't create, it's those that, that the board have allowed. They still haven't addressed why. So with that, you know, I can, I can tell, you know, I can tell the board and tell the audience, I'm right now recruiting members to run for 2023. I'm committing time and resources for that effort. So, you know, please, please, address those public, public records requests.
Thank you. Board members in front of you is the consent agenda for this, tonight's meeting, and you've had a chance to review those. Would like to ask for a motion to accept those.
Make a motion, sir.
Second.
First and second, and Mr. Hancock.
Mr. Isgr.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sprague.
Yes. Mr. Hancock, it's in your court.
Can I interrupt one second, please? We just hired a new associate superintendent-
Oh, yes.
-in Andrea Blevins, and I want to recognize Andrea's here tonight, and very well-deserving of that honor, so I want to recognize Andrea, and I, and you will be sitting up here starting the technical meeting with us.
I think you have some supporters out there.
You might as well speak to, yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yes, congratulations.
Well deserved, and-
Absolutely.
As your group here backs you.
Okay.
Board members, the financial reports for tonight we'll look at briefly. The cash flow analysis, and this is through October, estimated 34, just over $34 million. We've received $34,163,218, $90,000,218, better than anticipated at this point. The general property tax, we'd estimate about $7.8 million, in fact, right on it.
Excuse me, Mr. Hancock, are you able to cast that?
It, you just froze up on me, that's why I tried to do that while she was talking. We've received 78, $7,859,075,56, $59,076, better than anticipated. What you want to look at here is the fact that last year, you received $8,149,264, and $8.2 million the year before. Could be some collection differences there, it, it definitely is in due part to the fact that there was a refund of taxes made to a taxpayer, and so we actually had on, we had these various columns, one's called delinquent taxes collected, those numbers are actually negative in the commercial side, which is very unique, and you wouldn't expect those, and that alerted us very quickly. We also knew last year that our collections ran about $120,000 better than you would have predicted that they would have done. Well, there you go. All righty. And moving on, the, the tangible tax at this time is running a little better than planned, about $18,000 better than planned, and in fact, $23,000 better than last year. Those aren't huge numbers in our, in our overall budget, but certainly welcome numbers. The next thing you want to look at, unrestricted grants and aid, and that's your main state funding line item, estimated $23.5 million, basically that's what you've received, but what you really want to look at is, that $23.5 million this year compares to the $24.6 million last year and $25.1 million the year before. Now, don't get alarmed by that, because there's so many state funding changes that those numbers went down, but you're also going to have reductions on the expenditure side, where they were taking charter school dollars out, Ed Choice dollars out, those aren't happening to you as well. So it's about a, about a $2.9 million net difference. We are going to be finishing up the forecast in the next couple of weeks. We are not going to have the state funding formula put out by ODE until sometime in December, so we're simply going to have to run with simulations as they were, and rely on some of the consultant's work as well that, that helps us do some of those calculations. The restricted grants and aid, and that's just certain parts of the formula, you're running as expected. The expenditures at $32.7 million, we're, we're basically at that number as well, $56,657 less than anticipated. Things are running in line as we would anticipate them to be. Sowers are actually a little bit down from last year, that's to be anticipated, you've got a lot going on with the, the COVID dollars where, where you've been covering some positions. So we'll watch and see how that continues, but right now, going as planned. I'd entertain any questions you might have on the general operating funds.
Can you get any feel for the funding formulas coming out?
Well, it's, I don't think it's going to generate any significant dollars from, for us based upon what we were seeing in simulations. The simulations indicated it wasn't going to do much, and so far, that's what I'm seeing. But OD is continuing to work on getting all the details on that before they release it, the latest we've heard is December. We'll see when they release it.
I'm making a motion, we accept.
So you're done? Assume you're done, okay.
I'm making a motion, we accept, Mr. Hancock's. Finance report.
Yes.
Second.
Mr. Hancock?
Mr. Isgr.
Yes.
Mrs. Matthews?
Yes.
Mr. Sprague?
Yes. Being as there's no other items on our agenda, our next meeting will be on December 9th. Our executive and work session will start at 4:30, and our regular session will be at 6:30. That's on December 9th. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned, thank you.
Everybody have a great Thanksgiving.
Yes.
And see you back here on the night.